Okay, we'll go ahead and I apologize to everybody. We'll have the pledge of allegiance and open the meeting at 6:27. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I apologized for everyone. Chris is on vacation and we forgot to have somebody here to unlock or the person that was supposed to do it forgot and but Neil stepped in, did a great job. Poor PEG TV didn't get a chance to set up, so we'll carry right on. Approval of the agenda, the consent agenda, does anyone have any additions for the agenda?
Can I just add a bullet point for Mike Rowe to speak a little bit about our seventh and eighth grade team building?
Okay, we'll put that right underneath the community comments. Anyone have anything else? Okay, hearing none, motion to accept the agenda. Thank you Tina. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to teacher staff. Mike, you're up.
I'm up. So people are asking about our seventh and eighth grade trips. Chinga Cook is where we usually go for seventh grade. They're not doing anything until spring 2022. And so the current eighth grade class missed last year of Chinga Cook and this seventh grade would be missing it as well. So I met with Steve Lulek from the Green Mountain Rock Climbing Center and came up with some, what I think are some pretty cool alternatives for them to team build at the very beginning of the year. You should have a letter from him if nobody copied it. Okay, well, there's a letter with a proposal from them. At first, it was just going to be a two-day off-campus during school hours trip, which consisted of canoeing and kayaking. One group will be canoeing and kayaking one day and then the other group will be rock climbing, rappelling, and tunneling at Deer's Leap and then they'll switch on the next days. Then he came back and said, listen, let's do something on the Wednesday. So on Wednesday, at no additional cost, they're going to go to the Rock Climbing Center, all 40 at once, or however many we have in seventh grade. And rock climb in the first part of the morning and then we'll bus them up to Lefferts Pond and the reservoir and then they will split in canoes and kayaks for the before lunch. We plan to have lunch there for them and then they'll canoe kayak afterwards and then they'll continue on Thursday and Friday with their main objectives to their team building activities.
Awesome.
So if you're in support of that, that is scheduled for the Wednesday after Labor Day. So we're in school Tuesday and then they're out of school. Seventh grade is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If you're agreeing with that, then eighth grade would go the following week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and do the same exact program. The pricing is $100 per kid. We're getting three days of Steve's equipment and all that, so it's about 33 bucks a day per kid. I looked at alternatives in Vermont, I'm not going to say the places, they were expensive. They could kind of accommodate us, but they were way more expensive than what we traditionally play when we go to Chinga Cook and this is less than half the price for them to do these activities, if that's what you'd like to do. I firmly believe it's great, this team building activity, it's going to challenge them just like they would if we went to Chinga Cook. But we're also going to incorporate the eighth grade, if you think that's a good idea, the following week. Teachers are on board as far as going, so subs will be an issue to a certain extent. There are some that will stay back and so we can figure that part out. But I think it's a very valuable experience for them, especially right at the beginning of the year. Normally, we don't go on our trip until the end of September-ish, so this is even better. So with your support and once you agree with that letter that Sarah and Eric have, they can just forward it to you and, you know, if you're good with that, then I can tell him to block off that time because there is time he needs to plan for that and make sure that it's ready to go. So if you're good with that, that's my proposal for trips at the beginning of the year. If anything else wants to happen, school-related, obviously, that's teacher-driven if they go to Monshire or whatever.
Now, don't they normally, students pay? Or is that, okay?
Students pay.
I'm just wondering if it's too short a notice every month?
Typically-
You're correct in that regard, but Chinga Cook really comes quick.
Right.
So even though we might tell them in the fall, in the spring, that hey, we're going on a trip, the week of September is such-and-such, it's still early and it's still quick. So I think if we get a letter out to parents just saying, hey, this is what we're planning to do, this is the cost, and this is what we're gonna, you know, this is how it's gonna go. So we'll need to arrange transportation, which is just up to Deer's Leap and over to Pittsford, pick up and drop off for most of that, but we can figure that part out.
I was gonna say, usually, day trips like that, the bus takes them anyways, correct?
Right, and usually, I mean, I know the board usually approves overnight trips, but the last time we had met, I forgot who mentioned, what about the eighth graders? Somebody did and I thought that was a really good point, so I talked to Mike and Mike has been awesome. He's put in a lot of time and, you know, we talked about, we were trying to think about money and fundraising and we just thought, especially during this time, it's just too expensive. We can't ask families to pay for what we were getting quoted. So I think this, if anything, is better and we get to have both seventh and eighth grade do some day trips. So Sheri and I are gonna meet and start, if we have your blessing, we'll start a letter and get it to families so they'll have just as much time as if we were to have, you know, because usually they get the letter for Chinga Cook.
Now, the only other question I have is, we're including eighth grade, what if the parents come back and they want to try the trip again to go to Denver?
It's up to you. I mean, everything is contingent on what you want to do.
For the trip for what? For DC?
Washington, right.
So with Washington, that's definitely on the docket. I have a meeting, so I have a meeting with Go Educational Tours with Eric. Sheri and I are gonna meet with them in August. The head of, there's a lot of people on vacation, so we're on a list. We've reached out to them, so we're gonna meet with them in August and then I'm, we're gonna reach out to eighth grade parents. As soon as we have information, we'll have a meeting and then I would ask eighth grade parents to come to the board to ask permission before November 15th, if that's a go.
Yeah, it's just because fundraising is such a usually arduous task for the eighth grade, just getting it out there so that parents maybe can start having the children earn their own money or whatever ahead of time. If we end up not having enough interest or not going, then the parents still have their money, we don't have to divvy it up yet. Questions?
No, I think the questions that I would have would be like after this experience to like compare it to Chinga Cook and like, if this is gonna save, if this is gonna save a lot of money and it's a great experience that you, that in your opinion, like, would be equal, like, that's something to revisit next year.
Steve's done a good job with us before, but you can't replace Chinga Cook.
Right.
Chinga Cook, they are camping out, they are, there's just an experience there that you, you can't get during the day on a day trip and no disrespect to that, it's its own, you have to go to experience to understand.
Right.
And to get rid of it would be a shame because it is such a tremendous value because, and we've even extended it, where we leave Tuesday afternoon so that they can immerse themselves and feel like they're actually gone away and can just kind of relax and step outside their comfort zone and experience things that they might not necessarily experience. So that's a great point because Steve has done things with us in the past and he's wonderful and it's awesome, but that experience for me is a great experience for the kids and every kid asks that. That's one of the first things they ask when they come back.
Students-
How was it?
We've had so much approval from the students that have gone, even when they graduate, that's always, Washington DC is awesome, but Chinga Cook is the one that gets all the praise because it really, it's self-esteem and everything else, it's a great builder. But I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing away with the eighth grade trip without any input.
No, it was just-
This would be in place of-
Them missing Chinga Cook.
Eighth grade really needs something they've kind of been short-changed on a lot, so, I mean, that's up to you if you want to go forward with that. They didn't get that experience.
Right, right.
So they missed out on that and this group needs some, some extra team building and they haven't really had, you know, they've gone through the COVID thing, so they didn't get to experience that, so.
We may possibly give them both experiences.
We could potentially give them both experiences, yes.
That was kind of, yeah, I didn't think of our-
We could shorten the eighth grade if, if you wanted to do like a one-day Friday, like I could talk to Steve, like, we went rock climbing in the morning and then we'd go canoeing and kayaking and a lunch on a day thing, that could be potential rather than three days. You know, so I think there's some give and take with that. But, you know, for me, when he started talking, I was just like, yeah, man, don't even go any further, we're good, we're doing what you want to do.
Awesome.
Our kids need it. They really need that.
We owe it to them with everything that's gone on the last couple of years.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So one day, you're doing rock climbing at the center and then kayaking and canoeing?
Getting them prepped for Thursday and Friday. So Wednesday is a warm-up inside rock climbing, below harness, because they'll be, obviously to be challenged by choice, so if they choose not to when they're up on Deer's Leap.
So what if they choose not to, is there another-
Then we'll have to have an activity for them to, you mean not to go in general?
Or, or they try the one, you know, at the center and then they get too scared or too nervous?
They can still go up and do the hike and support their classmates. And that's what happens at Chinga Cook. Like, we have kids, like, when we go on the high rope stuff, we'll have kids that, their goal was to climb the ladder, like, an eight-foot ladder. They can't go any more than that, they just, their body won't let them, but the fact that they actually went up eight feet was huge. So that's, can't even describe, because I usually sit right there for that whole time with every group and that's the best part for me. But anyway, that being said, those activities, they can support their classmates in the activities and at least going to the Rock Climbing Center, they'll get that comfort. Most, everybody has either been there, wanted to go there. If not, then it's a great opportunity for them in a very safe and controlled way. And then if they want to attempt something, then that would be, that would be their choice.
I want to thank you for reaching out to Steve and for Steve for offering this, I think it's a great idea. My other question is, if Chinga Cook is incomparable, would it make more sense to hold off on the seventh grades and see if we can do them in the spring when it's open again?
They need it now rather than later.
Right, they do for their team building.
They're making a transition from two classrooms, seventh grade is the forgotten year. Okay, if you make it through seventh grade, you, you survive. It's the one year of education that if you think about it, it just kind of, it's there. You have to make it through and this helps them see what their strengths and weaknesses are. It allows them, your kids have, they've come back with stories of, of a great time, I would hope, they laughed when I was there, so it's, it helps them.
That's not necessarily good.
It helps them get through and, and challenge themselves and we can, as teachers, we go back and say, hey, listen, remember at Chinga Cook when you did this? Remember you or that? And so you can constantly bring that back to help them out if they're struggling. So putting it off is not as meaningful right now when they're in that, they're in a developmental stage where they, they really could use it.
Plus, we still don't know what next, spring is gonna look like.
Yeah.
Gives you a foothold.
Yeah.
And I guess my last question is, I think one of the big things at Chinga Cook are the trust games and the problem-solving aspect of the groups and I feel like if this is all rock climbing and kayaking, canoeing, and it doesn't have that aspect, that, that might be missed.
There's challenges within that, within those settings to do. So it's not just, hey, go climb the rock, that's not what it's meant to be. There are challenges within the actual setting for them to go through. So yes.
Because I think that the group process is one of the really nice things about Chinga Cook, when they're in those small groups and they have to kind of learn how to lean on each other and, you know, step up and-
Yeah.
Help each other, encourage each other. And I just, I think it would be a shame if we, they were gone three days without some of those trust games and things like that, so I'm hopeful that that could be included because I think it's really helpful. But I really like the idea and I think it should be for both seventh and eighth because the eighth graders did not get that last year and I definitely think they could use it. So, thank you.
No problem.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the trips for seventh and eighth grade.
Can you just make a contention that you looked at the letter and agreed with what the letter said?
And I don't think we need a, a motion because it's a day trip, but I'm happy to share.
No, it's several days.
I just want you to be comfortable reading.
Oh, if it's more than a day?
Well, it looks better.
Okay, okay.
That's all.
And that's all I'm saying, I just want you to look at their proposal.
We will.
I'm telling you this, but it, you physically-
Is there anything different in the letter that is going to make us go, oh, no?
No, no, but I just, I just want you to see it.
I understand, we'll get the letter and read it.
That's what I'm saying, that's all.
Any discussion?
That's all I want to say.
Should we formally approve it, given the letter in a couple of weeks? Because we're meeting on this night.
Well, they, they really have to get out there and get the money raised, that's all. So, yeah.
From what I've heard, it sounds fine to me.
Right.
I'm happy with a lot of it.
And we have the assurance that there's nothing that's gonna scare us in this letter, so I-
No, it's just a form of letter for participation in their activity. I just want you to see it before you-
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else?
I'm all set, you can go home and enjoy it.
Any questions? Sarah, did you have anything you wanted me to address?
No, I think I'll share, I'll share the letter, I didn't even think of sharing it beforehand.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about-
That's fine, if you want, I'm here.
Yeah. The, our lockers, or do you want me to share that for later?
Yeah, lockers, let me, let the group know. I had gotten a notification that the lockers, most of them are broken. Kelly wanted to take them out. They, I'll let Sarah explain their other reasons. The lockers are no longer, a few years ago, we were asked, I guess, I don't remember, we were asked to purchase new ones and at the time, money did not allow that. I had questions, as in where are the kids gonna put their stuff? I was advised that they could leave it in their TAs. I am not thrilled personally with that, knowing like last year when the kids have their backpacks with them everywhere they went, that certain things would appear in the kids' backpacks, they didn't know where it came from. So I just don't really like the idea of them just having them in the TAs. It's not like we can keep an eye on every room, but, so, go ahead, discuss the lockers.
Yeah, so we, at the end of the year, the middle school team, Mike within PLC, they came up with like a wish list of things and similar to all schools, we learned of a lot of things that we like to do through COVID that we want to keep and not using the lockers. We, teachers came to me and said, we don't want to use these anymore, we're not, they're too small, most of them are broke. How old are the lockers?
Uh, about 20 years old.
That's about 20.
We were-
Maybe, maybe, maybe longer, maybe 30.
I think even-
No, they're not 30, no, they're not 30, they're-
Jeff was even like, I'm surprised these have lasted.
We'll give you 25, how's that like?
Okay, they're 20-plus years old.
Okay.
They're, they're too small to fit kids' belongings, they're super loud, they take up a lot of space in the hallway and we've had some kids and teachers get bumped in the hallway, there's just not room for all of our kids in that hallway and we've realized through COVID, our kids don't use them, they don't need them. They're, so, yeah, teachers said, can we get rid of these? Most are broken, we need the space, kids aren't using them and I said, yeah, so I wanted to run it by Lynette and I don't know if you want to add anything?
So, yeah, we talked about it extensively in PLC with our list. Not having the lockers was like a godsend because kids are always asking to go to their locker, they're banging their lockers, there's confrontation at the locker in general with all the kids out there at their locker, even if you staggered it. So not having them made us realize that we really don't need them. Most rooms have hooks where the kids hang their coats, believe it or not, I don't know many middle school kids that wear a coat in the winter time anyway and that's-
That's on, it's true.
Okay, five and six do, but five and six are on board as well because we put, you know, we can have hooks in our classrooms, they can hang their coat or put their boots, it's not that much of an inconvenience. We've also, as a middle school, seven and eight, we have pared down what the kids need. So on our list, it's going home, is we, we're not allowing trapper keepers, they're bringing individual, small notebooks, they're so Chromebook-heavy with Google, they don't really need a lot of things and I think there's one person with a textbook. So the backpacks should not be very heavy at all. If they have sports stuff, they walk first thing in the morning, they put it in our, you know, revamped locker room and they put it there, it's not an issue. So we thought, why, they're taking up space, they narrow the hallway tremendously and they're basically, they're a nuisance, they're small, like you said, that most of them are broken, you can't really fit anything in it, you should see them try to shove the stuff in there and it's kind of like, you know, then they're ripping it and pulling it. So it was one of the better things of COVID is not having to deal with lockers because you just noticed how efficient and quiet and kids are not asking to leave to go to their locker, they're not spending time at their locker, their backpack is more personal, kids can walk by the locker, because there's maybe, you know, 15 locks in the hallway, so kids can go by, open up and do whatever they want, whenever they want. So having it on them is another thing. We did talk about, cell phones are a big thing, which, where they got them in the locker, so we, last year, had the kids, I laid out a shelf and they all put their name on it and they would come in in the morning and they'd put their shelf, cellphone there and pick it up in the afternoon, there's no reason. And I would tell the kids, your parents know where you are, if they have to come get you, they're gonna call the office and come get you, you don't need your cellphone, you don't need to carry it unless, say, for example, you're taking a picture in my classroom and then you ask and you can bring it in and take it. Otherwise, the cellphone, they don't need it. After school, okay, but during the day? So we had a nice system set up and it was very respectful and the kids just put their phone there, not a big deal, not a distraction.
Now, the other question I had were the girls and their personal products. I know one girl last year, someone had gotten into her backpack and showed a few things around, so I'm a little concerned about that. I know how I was as a teen, but I was just a priss anyways, but, so, they could carry them in their backpack, but I don't know, I, I don't want to get, put that stigma out there for the girls if they should need personal products or how do we address that?
And I think during COVID, kids, they carried their backpacks, you know, it was never, never an issue. Eric and I, we talked a little bit about that and he talked about, I don't know if you want to share about your former student that-
Yeah, one of my former students came up a proposal to put a basket in the ladies' bathroom that was supplied, so whenever there is an emergency or, it was always there, always available.
Even that is, is perfect, I just, it is.
Yeah, so Eric mentioned that from a student, I thought that's a perfect idea because we always, when we talk to health classes, we always say you can go to, you know, any adult.
Right.
But just, so that's something-
It would be embarrassing to say, well, I got to get in my backpack and I gotta be excused for a minute, I mean, I, I just trying to take that stigma out of it. That's a wonderful idea, Eric.
I completely agree, I think that some girls did not feel comfortable bringing their backpacks sometimes and not other times because it made them feel uncomfortable. So I think having something like that is a great idea and I believe there's something in the legislature that they're actually asking us to provide, so doing that will take the stigma away and be an easy transition.
Yes, sir.
I just, on a maintenance side of it, that, I've taken care of those for many years.
The lockers?
Yes. I would, I went through those lockers actually last summer, checked the operation of them and everything and about 90% to 95% of those lockers worked freely. The bottoms are smashed, we had to move them multiple times to replace carpet, which messed with them dearly. But a Republic Steel locker is, is a life locker, but I understand that they've served their life and it's time to move on to other things and, but I just want to say that, that that's, they're not all junk, they're, a lot of them are still workable, but we need to move forward, to move the school forward, move into the future, we need to do other things. And I totally agree with what you guys are saying, I'm just saying, you know, the old-school guy is saying, you know, the lockers aren't that bad a shape, but I do think we need to move forward with your guys' ideas and I support that.
Any more questions or comments?
It would be nice if we could find someone to purchase them.
But we don't know if we want them in there yet. Let's, um-
Yeah, I think we'll get, Steve, I'm pretty sure Kelly said we'll get metal, some metal for them.
Well, we can leave that for a year because of course that expense is not in the budget. So if we could just see how it's working through the school year, when it comes budget time, I'm sure if there's enough feedback and we need to put them back in, that's the time to bring it up to us, okay? Okay, do I have a motion? Or just, I, I guess all I need is a consensus that we have done away with the lockers and we're gonna let it go for a year, see how it works without them? Anybody against that idea? Okay.
Anything else that you have for me? Thank you for the busing, we'll inform our coaches that they can bus to and it's back and forth. Are we doing this like a, so that, from an athletic standpoint, is it making it mandatory that you ride home or?
We didn't, we didn't say. That's gonna be up to you guys to come up with a policy for that. I cannot see, right now, the bus will be there and it'll be coming home. I don't have to worry about little Jimmy or Jane getting abandoned. We'll see what kind of policy you come up with. I don't, I don't want the poor bus driver to be sitting there waiting for someone and no one's coming. So we've just got to come up with some sort of parental thing that they have to let you know, just like in the morning in school, they're gonna go, are they gonna come back? And we'll see how that goes and then we'll go, we'll see how it goes this year, maybe next year, we're only gonna need it one way, I don't know.
Well, that's fine, I, I don't have, I, this is, I think we've done busing once in my almost 20 years here.
Right.
Or we actually have bussed them every, every, every year and it was just, um, for-
Right, right, then we had to order them, it was a complete-
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we're still on teacher-staff comments, I don't know if anybody, we only have one, nobody-
There's a parent.
Yeah, I'm not to there yet. Okay, how about community comments? We don't have any community in the room, so, okay, hearing none, we'll continue on. New business? I don't think I have any new business.
An old business, too?
Doesn't really have old business until down below usually, I don't see old business on here, but we can do both. I do have a couple other things and I know that our SRO, Angie, has mentioned or spoken with you about the DARE program. She has a chance to, I think it's an 80-hour course for DARE, if we want to introduce DARE into the school, we haven't had it in a number of years. I do not think it's a bad idea personally, but I just wanted to hear what you guys had to say about it. The cost of the training is put through the PD, so it wouldn't cost us anything except we won't have the SRO when she's at training, but, I mean, they always know if our SRO isn't there, they just call the PD and we'll send somebody off the road, but.
I would be totally agree with that, you know, and PD's gonna pay for it?
They pay for the training, yep.
100%, yeah.
No, definitely, I remember when we had DARE and it's a valuable program to our school, so it's-
And I guess it's changed tremendously, but I'd be, I'll be interested to see, but I've always wanted it in there, but the two SROs we had weren't interested in it, so I'm thrilled with Angie, yes.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yeah, we are, Angie asked Eric and I, I just said, my experiences, a long time ago, I said, what are your thoughts? So I think we're just anxious if she wants- So I think we're just anxious if she wants, can go to the training and bring some things back.
Yeah, I looked up online and the first thing they said is that the old DARE is not the new DARE. And that got my attention. Then I looked at it a little bit more. It's, it's definitely worth a look and Angie's a perfect person for it.
She's loving the school. Absolutely loving it. I spoke with Sarah outside for a little while, Vermont Green Schools Initiative. I was approached by our town about the wastewater runoff. I did not know, apparently we have or the town applied for and got a permit when they did the work in the center of the school. This was before the one they just did. The permit, I think is a three-year permit. We're on year two. There is a three-year, I think the permit is good for three years. Now, the legislature has a three-acre rule that if any schools have three acres or more of imperious land, which means the square footage of your buildings, because the rain can't go down, any paved areas. I did, because it was such a short turnaround, I did contact Kelly. Kelly's been doing an awesome job with this. I knew nothing about this and what it, what the whole deal was. So Kelly did, he went on, I had sent them the little bit that I had. Kelly had gone on and he has an engineer that has come and looked at the school. They're in that process. I don't know exactly where they are there. But the other day I got an email from Chris Sell asking if I wanted to attend a webinar. And you know how I just love those things. I did. And it was only an hour, never did tell you how long it was going to be. It was only an hour, but I want to tell you, they are very impressive. This organization and their initiative, if you work with them, you can call them anytime for anything, just questions or whatever. They have a list of schools that are already on the initiative. Most of Rutland City schools are on it. There are various ones throughout Vermont, not a whole lot. Of course, we were not on there. And there's a process that we can go through with them. What they do is, at this point, they're going out for bids and talking to different contractors, different engineers. If they meet their, their regulations, I guess, then they get put on the list. And as long as we use someone from those lists, from their lists, we actually get reimbursed. So it wouldn't cost us anything. I'm not sure if Enman is, they had said there's no list right now. They were on the old list. I hopefully assume they're going to be on the new one, but because we're not under, we weren't under the school list, we are not able to get reimbursed for what Enman's doing. But any future projects, now that we're on the list, any future projects or whatever, we become eligible for reimbursement. I had, and it was huge. I'm not sure how the effect of the clearing that we did out back is going to affect it. I'm hoping that it's not going to affect it greatly, but all those trees we took down are no longer sucking water. So there's almost a clear path down to the river. So that's going to be up to the engineers to look at. There's other professionals that'll come in from the initiative. We are a part of Lake Champlain's waterway and being rural, but it's that close to the road and of course we slide downhill from the road. So you get a lot of chemicals and phosphorus and stuff like that that run into the water, which is what they're trying to mitigate. So I did forward all of the information I had to Sarah and Kelly. Louis did sign us up, so we're on the list of schools now. But I think anytime, we have to do this anyways. It's by law that any, really business that has over three acres has got to do this. And if you don't, you could be fined up to $25,000 and you still have to do it. So, and I apologize, I knew nothing about this, but, so that's where we sit. I know Kelly's on top of it. There's people, those people want us to call them and ask questions, ask for anything that they can help us with. And being like me that knows nothing, I just think it's awesome to have that type of backup. But I wanted to let you know, in case you hear about it, that we are in that process. We should be saving money. And from now on, as long as we use someone that they recommend, we can get the reimbursement. We cannot get it for the people before we were on the list. So Enmanson and that engineer, we would not be able to get it for, but would save us, I believe, a tremendous amount of money.
Would you say this is the name of this program?
It is the Green, Vermont Green Schools Initiative.
You know, you know when this program started?
I don't, I didn't. I wrote it on, I wrote it on my paper at home, so...
Well, the last, the last time we did the circle.
Right.
It was a whole thing where the town said we didn't need a permit and then...
But apparently they did because...
Well, we did. And so I had contacted Blair Enman and he'd come over and looked at the drainage and everything at that point.
Unfortunately, that permit put us in the process, even though it wasn't for wastewater per se. So that permit is the one that put us on that timeline. Now we're okay because we're going to start using this organization, this initiative. So we won't fall into the, oh, three years are up, here's your bill. So I was really enthusiastic. I wish, had I known, now going through the webinar, had I known what it was, I most certainly would have had Kelly sit in because it was a wonderful presentation. I'll look, I sent you the email. I'm not sure if one of them will give you actually the program itself. It may. They said they were going, they were taping it and...
Okay.
So you may find that in one of those bullets...
It could be recorded.
Right. He may be able to even learn more.
One of the questions we, we would want for them is, can we do any additional paving? Because that's one of the issues that we had, was they told us, we're at maximum capacity as far as paving goes.
I think at the end, we can do that. Right now, like I said, we have to find out what we have and how are we impacting the environment or not. I don't want any more clear cutting going on right now and I had advised Sarah of that. And just leave it the way it is to find out because I don't want to make matters worse by clearing out even more space. But like I said, I just learned about it myself.
So the, so like, I know Kelly and I had talked a while back about paving along the backside of the gym.
Right.
And that kind of stuff, it has to be on hold, but...
But isn't that already pavement?
Basketball court, no.
Okay.
That's not paved, but the basketball court...
Right, is.
Is, so that can be...
So any existing pavement...
Right, can be resurfaced.
Right. But I just don't want to add anything to it right now until we find out where we are. And they should be able to tell us at that point too. I mean, I have no idea if we hit the three-acre mark. Supposedly we do, I'm trying to figure it out in my head, but I guess mentally I can't figure what that looks like.
When we did the roof project.
Right.
That was, you know, we did minimal water drainage.
Right.
So it'll have to be addressed in this...
Yep, so we'll find out anyways.
Yep.
But at least we're in the right process and we're in, we're going in the right direction. So I assume we'll be getting some information back from Kelly from time to time on what that's going on. And I really appreciate him taking this on. It's a hu, huge project in itself, especially seeing how we are still one and a half janitors short. So just to let you know that he has been full out trying to do everything. And then the other information I want, I just don't like having information that you guys don't know about yet. A lot of times it doesn't come before us, so it's fine, but solar project, I'll just let you know that I received an email, I think last Monday maybe, and we had till Wednesday to let them know, this is what this company says they'll do, they can break it into two parts. One will be, I think it was, I don't know, 35,000 and the other was 52 or something like that. But we had to let them know if they have the contract by Wednesday. Absolutely not. We cannot do it. You have to have bids, you have to go out to bids. There's no way we could accomplish this by Wednesday because they were saying they would give us so much money off, 15,000. It was, it was a good deal, but there's no way we can circumvent the bidding process. So I said absolutely not. So the solar still is up in the air on what we're going to do. As far as bidding goes, just to make it, to make sure everybody understands, is it RFP? The, you know what I mean? What is the outline, the exact thing we're looking for?
Yeah, the specs.
The specs. The specs have to be done. Those have to go out to companies so that everybody is on the same page of this is what we need, this is what we're looking for, this is what you're bidding on. I know that Kelly has tried to save a lot of time in calling people because they're not necessarily responding. I know COVID has messed a lot of things up. But telephone conversations cannot, are not considered bids at all. And you have to make sure that everybody is working off the same page. So this is the specs, bid on this. And then we look at the bids and see who's lowest or whatever. We have got to start that process as soon as we can, just so that we can get the solar backup online. So I don't know if next meeting, if Kelly wants to come and talk to us on what's going on with that. But we, we definitely have to get out to bids so that we can find out what's going on.
So Kelly was trying to reach out directly to some other companies and nobody was calling him back. So that's when he went to you, me and Louis and was like, what, we need to get three bids and nobody calls me back. So then Louis said that there is a way, but you need to prove to the state that you don't have any more bids. So he did tell me today that somebody, it did, I don't know if it's, Louis put in the paper, but he said he did get one bid from a company in Canada that reached out to him.
Which is great, but I want the specs. I want the RFP done.
Right, something, that was done. So I, I don't, I don't know if it's in the Herald or where it is, but that was done. Louis had a quick turnaround on that. They worked together on that.
Great. Then if he wants to just give us, Kelly wants to give us an update on what's going on with that? Just so, I just want to make sure it's done properly. So, I mean, we only had one person, so, and the specs that we did, I think, were based off of what that one person said or one company. So we just, I want it all, you know how I am, want it all up front. Okay? That's all the information I have that you guys didn't know anything about. But I didn't bother to tell you about the solar because like I said, it's, it was a no deal. We've got to go out to bid. There's no way we can give a response in two days, so. Any questions on that? And now that it's on our, we'll keep you updated. Any new business or old business? Guess not, huh? That's awesome. Finances, you got the reports in your packet to look at? I don't think there was anything, Louis didn't need us tonight, just so that you can look. I know that all the final bills, I believe, have come in now from last year, so the books are closed. And I would assume next meeting Louis will be coming. Louis will be coming to give us an update on next meeting maybe?
I'm sure that he will be coming in either August or September. I'm not sure exactly what his timeline is, but once they wrap everything up and...
Right. I know they're very busy at this time, but, okay, great. So if you have any questions on these, make sure you get hold of Louis or myself. Some of them I can explain, some I can't. Directors orders, you all got the warrants in your email. Anybody have any questions on those? Hearing none, if I could get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the director's orders.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just got, oh, question on the expenditure report.
Which one?
Page three of five.
Yes, sir.
Down in the Board of Education. What is the 16,000 for insurance for?
Is that the, that's got to be insurance towards any actions we take maybe? Is that part of our insurance? I believe that's what it is, but we can, we can...
I don't know.
We can check with Louis on it.
I thought it was a large amount of money and I didn't, I don't know what it's for.
Lynette, I don't, I don't happen to have that sheet right in front of me, but I, I would be, I wouldn't be surprised if it was our Bizbit multi-line policy. We work with the state insurance trust, board of insurance trust, and they work with school boards on having a multi-focus insurance policy, provide a lot of resources and supports to us, both preventative and then also technical assistance whenever there's an incident. So that would be my guess without having that right in front of me.
All right. I can check with Louis and he, I can get back to you. I'm sure that's what it is. I know we took the insurances and we put them under the categories they belong in. We've got a great policy, very minimal out-of-pocket expense, if you remember when we had to redo the school, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just didn't know where that, that was.
Yep. If you stop to think of the legality of the school in total, that's a lot to insure. But I believe that is what that is, but I can have Louis get back to us on that.
Thank you.
Any more discussions or questions? All in favor of approving the warrants?
Aye.
The minutes of June 28th. Tina? What you got?
So, right off the bat, Russ Morrison was listed as vice chair and he is not, I am. So I'm hoping that will be corrected for next time.
In the minutes themselves, they all already say that, but she must have forgotten.
Yeah. And then Kelly's name was spelled with an extra E.
Okay.
Are you sure it's just K-E-L-L-Y?
Correct.
Throughout. And then the last thing I noticed was Shane Bushy is the part-time custodial staff that we hired.
Mm-hmm.
Were approved retiring. And it, in the minute, it's listed as Bush.
Okay.
I believe it's B-U-S-H-E-E.
Right. And she just hit the D instead of the E.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was all I noted.
Do you need a minute to read them or are you ready for approval?
I'm ready for approval. With the amendments.
That a motion?
That's a motion.
Oh, I thought it was. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Superintendent's report, Lisa, you got anything?
No, you all, you have Chris's report in the packet and I don't have any updates for you from him at this time beyond what's in the report, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have about what's in there.
I don't know, did you all read them? It's pretty short and sweet. I'm glad that Chris finally got a vacation of some sort in.
I was curious that on the fall reopening, it says all Quarry Valley schools will follow the normal framework.
Right.
Was that, most of it say all Gerstoo schools?
Yes, I'm sure that he just copied and pasted out of another board report, Tina, but yes, all, all JRC SUV schools.
See, now we're all on the same calendar, I would assume so, yes. Okay.
Just trying to...
Nope, that's good.
So what are we doing with the mask thing for opening?
There are none right now. There, there's no mandatory masks. I know because of the new variant, some... There's no mandatory masks. I know because of the new variant, some states, some, you know, they're talking about making it mandatory again for teachers and students. Vermont has not done that yet. Chris in here said he's keeping up with it. Let's hope not. So.
Well, I'm driving bus this summer in the Fairhaven district. Got some sort of notice from the state and so the drivers and the students are wearing but ask again.
Lisa, you haven't heard anything, have you from?
Yeah, what Jeff's talking about is the, school buses are considered public transportation. So there was information sent out by the agency of education. The CDC is requiring masks on public transportation. So for any of our summer programs that have transportation in place for students, that was communicated with those individuals and their families. It's only a very small number for us this summer. So not a lot of people that I know. Chris is actively participating in the weekly superintendent's meetings with the agency of education. It is, all those details are the questions on the top of everyone's mind and trying to get clarifications from the agency about what the expectations will be. So at this time, we don't have any other information in that area, but we'll continue to see, see what the state comes down with in the coming weeks.
Okay. Yeah, Chris on his bulletin did say that about the fall opening, the AOE, and he expects to get more information sometime in August. So he is on top of it, but nothing so far. I know there's a lot of rumors out there. I've been asked myself, are, do the kids have to wear masks? And as of right now, no. So of course, we know the way things are for the last year and a half. It could change tomorrow, but right now, no.
I believe the way that Chris always says it is that as of today, July twenty-sixth at seven twenty PM, that is the current response that we have available.
Perfectly, Lisa. Thank you. Okay. Principals report.
All right. So I didn't provide you with a formal report for July. Chris gave principals a month off for doing board reports, so I just have a verbal update for you on a few things. So summer school is going well. We have about a dozen kids in each group, give or take. Middle school has invited a guest speaker every day during snack time, which has been really fun. Eric and I were both guest speakers along with a number of other individuals. Some retired teachers have come back, which has been fun. Eric also took the list of kids that were recommended for summer school that we either didn't hear back from parents or didn't show up. And so he was able to get a handful of more kids in attendance, which was great, and just introduced himself. Tapestry is at capacity, running, doing some great field trips. We've posted some things on Facebook.
They look like fun.
Yeah.
I want to go to tapestries just so I could go do it.
They are having a good time. There's about forty students in our tapestry program and there is a waitlist at every school.
Great.
Tapestry school site. Excited school year, which is our special ed program, great attendance, full swing. Tina, Louis and I met with our food service directors last week, I believe.
Maybe, yeah.
Sometime, sometime, I don't know. And we gave them some feedback on our school meals and they told us that their, their plan is to have the salad bar return. Eric is working on the lunch and recess and duty schedule. He has to, he's blowing everything up, so to speak, because it's, he's finding a lot of things. But our, our hope is to get all kids, with the exception of some of our really little kids, like in preschool, to be in the cafeteria. So I don't know if you want to share anything from that meeting, Tina?
I took away that they're hoping to get some maybe different staff involved to make things go smoother and to bring up the quality of the food. They didn't realize how much of an issue it had been for us. The other thing we mentioned, I think, at the meeting was the amount of food that the kids are given. And they had said that there was a possibility of allowing students to purchase another entree if they were still hungry, especially if we didn't have the salad bar as an option. So if that were the case, I think that we should discuss how we would want to do that because not every student can afford, you know, to pay extra and the schools are free. The lunches are free. So, you know, would it be something that we would cover and see how it went? You know, how a few months went and see if that was something that, you know, if somebody wanted it, they could just get it and we would keep tally and.
Did you ask by chance, Michelle Obama went through all that, they could only have so many calories. So we had, you know, fourth graders getting the same amount as our eighth graders and some of the eighth graders outweighed fourth graders by four times. So I was just wondering if there was any way to up the level of food a little bit for our seventh and eighth graders, the bigger kids. I think that's the ones that are still hungry, if I'm not mistaken. I know that sometimes we have apples or fruit or something I can take. But I, I don't want to have to charge anybody, especially when it's free. So I'm not sure how that would work with them.
They made it sound like they were restricted with that calorie thing, so that.
I thought that went away. We did not have to.
He said that there were restrictions. I don't know what those restrictions are and that they have to play within the rules. But one of the things they could offer would be that they could come up and get a second entree. But they would charge us for it. It wouldn't be free then. I mean, I think he threw out a dollar twenty-five or he threw out a number. It wasn't a full meal, but it was like, it was less than the meal cost, but it would be something.
And in the past, I've just told the kitchen staff, just charged my account. It's not.
I don't think she should be paying.
No, definitely not.
Yeah, but I always say, we don't want kids to go hungry.
No, no, and I agree.
I think that maybe that would be something that we should discuss as a board of how to deal with that. I don't think Sarah should be financing this.
No, but I also think it's a problem that we've talked about over the past three years that our bigger kids are not getting the food they need. I understand having the calorie restriction, but they're going to differ depending on the age and the size of the kids. So I don't know how the kitchen staff is going to figure that out, but I think they should.
So Wells Springs, they supplement their food budget. And so that's something that we could, you know, look into maybe for next budget year.
They don't have, they don't have this food service.
No. I don't think they do, or they add to it. I'm not sure how it works.
So they have their own, they don't have the food service that we have. They have their private kitchen staff. And they also qualify for fresh fruits and vegetable grant program that we don't because that, we don't have the free and reduced lunch numbers. So that helps during snack time.
Right.
You know, and like I, I mean, I went to Wells Village School a couple of years ago and that, I was most impressed with their food service. They had like local roasted butternut squash with Vermont maple syrup that kids were eating and like apple wedges. And they brought all like warm. It was just amazing.
I kind of get excited about this a little bit because I've watched this for years. I've seen, when I first started there, the, the quality of food that they had. And when you bring a food service in, not dismantling them, but it, it, quality goes down because it's about money. And, you know, one of the things that always frustrated me was we got half of our school losing their teeth. And you serve the kids an apple every day, an apple, an apple, an apple, you know? And it's like, we need to diversify and get some quality food in there for those kids.
We did mention that we'd like more variety, that we would like some more options offered, you know, not sun butter and jelly.
Yeah, that, that does not go the way.
Every single day or.
It's kind of, it's kind of frustrating that just because we're wealthier, we can't offer our kids a better meal. That's wrong. You know, that's just wrong.
Well, yeah, I know. And it, and it's really hard. We can't, the people that should be applying for the free or reduced lunches are not. No matter how hard we try. And nobody needs to know who it is or anything else, but everything, our entire educational financial package is based on our numbers. So when they don't take the free or reduced lunches, they're hurting us not only on the lunches, they're hurting us everywhere in the budget. And I, like I said, no kid will ever go hungry. Back when we had our own staff, the reason we no longer have our own staff was we were running from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars in the hole every year. Yeah, it was better food, but we couldn't charge enough or we still had the people like we ran into that will not pay. Okay, mom and dad, if you don't want to pay, that's fine, but your kid is not going to go hungry. We're not going to make them go hungry and we're not going to make them have sun butter and jelly, whatever. I don't even, I don't even like the name of it. I wouldn't even try it. But, so, and, and we want better quality food. If you want to look into it a little farther and if, I don't know how many kids are actually still hungry. I mean, is it just the seventh and eighth graders, maybe fifteen kids a day?
That's what I was trying to say. If we, you know, allow them to purchase an extra entree, then we saw how that went for a month or two and saw what that cost would be like. I think that would be, you know, something we could look at and have more information. They also mentioned they're going to do soups again, as we mentioned, that that was something that the students look forward to in the wintertime. And they said they were bringing back their snack, like their fruit of the month or whatever as a snack. They, and these are all things that went away.
If we can find out, you know, how much it is, like if, you know, the larger kids want an ex, want extra serving, we won't even call it an entree, an extra serving, and it would cost us a buck, buck twenty-five. Just nail down what that cost is and we can try it for the middle school.
I think one thing is just educating the kids that you can go up and have more fruits, like the salad bar. I would say you can go up and have another serving of that, you know? But then some kids, they're starving and they need a whole nother meal. So I would just say, that's fine, go and you can put it on my account, but I think we can just tell the kids that. Like, let's see what the food service is going to look like. Is there really going to be a salad bar? I'm optimistic, but I'm still.
We haven't had.
Believe it when you see it.
I believe it when I see it because it's been a rough couple of years with food service.
And if there isn't, what are they going to do about it this year?
And it is a lot of the same, like the apples, like you said.
You know, maybe we need to put that on the table, you know?
So the.
Contract.
It's approved by, it's approved by the board.
Right, but I'm just saying.
The Gert Sue board.
Right.
So it's not, it's not. Sue board.
It's not us. It's supervisory union approves.
So I don't know how Wells Springs got out of it.
No, no, they're, they were separate, okay? If Rattletown wanted to be separate and have our own staff and all of that, we could. It's going to be a lot more expensive.
So I think that's what we maybe want to look at this budget year.
Well, let's try a year, see how, if they improve.
I think we need to push the pressure on somebody.
Well, I think we have. I think we have.
And they were saying that they would be open to surveying students, which I would really like to have them.
I mean, what if they do like a sandwich box? Say that they're, they're doing chicken nuggets and fries. They do an extra portion in there. So this kid comes up, some student comes up at once, here, you know? Not the whole meal, the milk and all that stuff, but just an additional portion.
Well, that's what they, they said that they'd offer, but then we need to figure out how that works because they need us to pay for it.
Right.
Sarah can't pay for every student.
No, and she shouldn't.
They may not, there, there wasn't, I mean, I, it wasn't that much. There was a handful of kids every month.
But if you offer it, if you offer it in the line, do you want one or two servings?
Right.
So that, you know, I, I don't know. I think if people know that.
It will be more, as long as they're not wasting.
It could be a lot more. Yeah, if you tell every kid that.
It will be a lot more. It will be.
Because they will, especially if it's better quality than last year. I could see the middle school kids eating eight chicken nuggets instead of four. I mean, my kids, four does not cover from fifth grade up, right? And that's all they're offered, four, and a thing of orange wedges and a milk. That was, that was their meal. So I think that if they're offered, would you like one or two servings? Most kids are going to take two servings if it, you know, if it's at a.
Right. I just, yeah, we'd have to, yeah, you'd have to talk to them and see how you want to do that. A lot of the kids will say, they'll go back, yeah, can I have two servings? But all they actually want is the chicken nuggets. They don't care about anything. Right.
And that, well, that's what they said. It was only the entree that they would allow double up. But if they have a salad bar, they can get as much as they want. So we need to figure out, do we offer it to them when they go through the line the first time? Do we make them get back up, just make them sure that they're aware that if they like a second entree, they can go in and just keep track? And then see how much that adds up to and then we figure out what we do after a month. You know, something like that.
Because they have to, they're supposed to have a fruit and a vegetable on their plate.
So they still need it.
Some kids will just have chicken nuggets.
Right.
You know, they'll have like four chocolate milks and four chicken nuggets.
Maybe we need to say, once you're finished with your fruit or vegetable that you took, then you can go get a second entree. Maybe we do it that way to make sure the kids are still getting some type of veggie or fruit.
If you clean your plate, you're still hungry, go back up and they'll give it to you. You know, and we've run into this. I think that's how we got up to the amount of money we did when we had our own service. Like I said, the food was wonderful and I really hate those potatoes, but let me have some more meatloaf, you know, kind of thing. So, I mean, you guys, you, you're the committee, talk to them, see what, you know, if, if, and like I said, the calorie thing, I understand that was Obama's thing. Supposedly that went away from what I've read. There's a lot of schools that were happy that they'd be able to give their kids more food. But even the calorie thing, it depends, even if it's only for our junior high, that they get a larger portion.
Yeah, and they can't do that because of the guidelines.
I think they can. I mean, if these guys are getting less, everybody shouldn't be getting the same amount. Okay? So if these guys get a little less because they're smaller, you should have something additional for the big guys. You can't just say, okay, you, we only get fifteen hundred calories per person. So therefore, you know? I don't know. I'll let you guys figure that out. We got time.
They basically said, this is the amount of money that we're getting and this is what you're getting for the money. So I think that's part of the problem. So they said to, to, to give us something more, they'll give the option of purchasing a second entree. And they, the salad bar, if we have it, should be free for refills.
Right.
So I think if we just offer that for the students that want the second entree, once they finish some veggies or fruit.
Right.
I think that that might be enough and then we can see how many students that is September and talk about the October meeting about what we want to do going forward. Because it's not in our budget, so we need to.
No, but if it's.
I would even think that, like, September and October, because I just feel like it's going to be something new and every kid, it's going to be like a boom of like, and like October's numbers could be significantly different because it's not new, not something like, oh, we can get, we can get, we can get. And then it's like, oh, like, I don't really want the extra four chicken nuggets. Like, I'm not going to get it today. I think like a two-month trial would be.
Maybe better.
Yeah.
It's, it's tough to monitor. There's a couple of adults in every lunchroom and with middle school kids, I'm just saying. It's, it's a lot to, to monitor and kids will get one piece of pizza and dump their fruit, vegetable and everything else. Like, I want another meal. And like, if I were aware and I know the kid, I'm like, you, did you eat your apple or whatever it was? And it's like, you can't just have just pizza.
Right.
So I think it's just mod, like the.
Yeah, I don't know how to work that, but we'll leave it up to you guys.
It, it, it's a tough one because I saw, you know, over the years, saw a lot of food go in the garbage.
A lot of food.
You see that all the time.
Right, right. And, you know, you're not going to make a kid eat an apple.
I can't blame them. I get stuff that I don't want to eat, but.
You know, I'll eat a banana, but I ain't eating an apple.
Yep.
I got teeth that fall out.
Okay, next.
Or kids with braces.
Right. Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yes.
They should have, yeah, they should have options.
Off stuff.
Okay. So I, okay, talked about food service. Eric and I were at our admin retreat the week of July twelfth. I wanted to thank, again, the Rattletown Highway Department for the pavement out front. It looks amazing. I wanted to thank Tina for serving on all of our interviews. That's been a lot of time. We are still looking to hire anybody out there. We're looking for two special educators, one a full-time special educator and one for a long-term substitute position from September to the middle of December. Maintenance update. Kelly just wanted me to give you, aside from constant cleaning and other things and lots of room movement this year, the sewer cleanout is happening by Pat McLaughlin mid-August. The radon testing is August eleventh through the thirteenth. We have a fire extinguish inspection. Life safety testing and new communicator install will happen by the end of August. New dishwasher installation of the end, end of August. New dishwasher installation at the end of August. The solar project is ongoing, stormwater. There was a visit that had already happened and that will continue again in September. So I'm going to have Kelly reread that Vermont Green Solar Initiative because we were a little confused on that and just contact that person directly or call you.
Yep, no problem.
And that's it.
Any questions for Sarah?
I have a question.
Sure.
A little disappointed the way our grounds are being taken care of.
We'll take care, we'll take that up at a different time. I've already spoken about that with her one-on-one. There are a lot of reasons for that, but...
Well, I've had, I've had some public call in, I...
That's fine, but we don't want to bring anybody, no employees or staff, just... She's been, they, I've spoken to Sarah about it, she'll look into it. Again, we are extremely short on our maintenance department, but we don't want to...
Unacceptable.
Okay, it's been noted. Anything else for Sarah? Contract recommendations. You have it in here. Professional staff. We have, this is the, I think we're still listed down for needing an art teacher, but we've got...
Until it gets approved.
Until it gets approved.
Okay, I was wondering why that was still on there. Was like, okay, so on there, we'll take, take them separately. Professional staff, we have a contract that's being recommended for Patricia Carpenter, the art teacher for next year. Any questions or if I could have a motion?
Motion to accept Patricia Carpenter as a new art teacher.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Support staff, Cassidy Humphrey, pre-K para. She's coming to us from GURCSU.
She's a current para in our, in our school building. She works with a student and since the pre-K para, Shelley Pelkey retired, she would like to move to that para position in pre-K.
Okay.
So they're under general, they're generally funded positions. So it's a separate contract for pre-K, so that's why it's on here.
Okay. Second one is Caleb Giles, custodian. Is that full-time, part-time?
Full-time.
That's full-time. And Carrie Bishop, pre-K para. Any questions or a motion to approve the support staff?
Motion to approve the support staff.
Any questions, comments?
Just on the amount, again, we're, we're going to need to do something.
Well, that's, yeah, that's negotiations, so, yeah. All I can tell you is we're working on it. There's nothing we can do.
We're not going to retain any more.
Well, we can't do a thing about it, unfortunately, because of negotiations. That rules everything, I know. Believe me, I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can talk about that later with you if you want, but there's nothing we can do right now. I harp on that every time I get with negotiations. Relocations, and that's the same, there really is nothing for us to do with this.
Right, Marilyn has been in the pre-K assistant and she's decided for next year she wants to work with some other students one-on-one.
Okay, so...
So Carrie will be going to where Marilyn was last year and Marilyn will be working with some one-on-one students.
Okay. But she doesn't really change, it's just...
Well, she was considered a GRCSU para, or no, she was a pre-K para out of our general fund budget and now she's moving to a GRCSU special education.
Okay, so that contract will go through GURCSU, not us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Vacancies, wouldn't you want to say it one more time out loud, what we have for vacancies?
Anybody who's looking for a special ed position, we have the best special educators that I have ever worked with in any school building. Please come join us. We have two openings. And we're also looking for a building-based substitute that will be funded through S.R. funds. That's twelve dollars an hour position. It's at-will employee, but that is posted on school spring as well.
Anybody out there that has any questions about these positions or anything, feel free to call Sarah or Eric. Really would like to get these filled. Okay, chairs report. I pretty much already told you everything under the new and old business. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 9th. I've been requested to move that if we could. Where's my phone? Well, it'd be easy, 23rd, 23rd would be two weeks, right? That would be our third Monday.
Lynette, I do know that Chris is planning to be away on the 23rd.
What am I going to do with you?
I'm away on the 9th. Not far, but I'm, I'm at my daughter's score show and I, just at the fairgrounds and I don't think I have service there.
But you can only stand it off.
If...
I'm away the 9th too.
You're away the 9th too, okay.
I also think that the issue is that Chris had said that there's going to be someone from...
Oh, we can't change it because that's our retreat. That's the other paper I didn't bring. We have someone coming in.
We had mentioned that before.
Right, we can't change it.
So I'm going to try to call in if I can, but I will be present.
There's, yeah, all the school districts are scheduled for this kind of retreat thing. It's just somebody's going to come in and talk to us all and it's easier if we just do it on our regular meeting day.
I think it's a legislative update or something?
Well, that too, but there's also, we also, I didn't bring my paper. I thought I had them all stapled together, but I didn't. So let me make sure. Lisa, do you know what I was talking about? Who do we have coming in for the retreat type thing?
I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. Is it, there are two consultants working with different boards and I'm not sure which one is working with you. Is it, is it Dave Walk or there's also a woman who's doing some of them?
I think it was a woman.
I think it is the woman. I know that, okay. Yeah, because you mentioned Dave too, if we had gone a different date. But he wanted to try to do it at our board meeting so we didn't have to meet again. But that is on the 9th, so... Okay.
Yeah, there's no way I can...
I know.
Okay.
But Eric will be there, he can tell you everything.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll keep that date the same then, August 9th. And I'll make sure when Chris is back that he lets you know what... I just, off the top of my head, I can't remember because it was three, it was before I went on vacation, so... I kind of lose everything. Policies. You have in front of you the driver's education policy. This was brought up, oh, last year. And for some reason, we had made a change to it. The minutes did not reflect the change, so it was brought back to us again. And Tina, you wanted, the change was...
So, in number three...
Yep.
It says, if the student's school does not offer driver's education or if the student is homeschooled, reimbursement of four hundred dollars upon receipt will be made to the parent guardian.
Okay, so it shouldn't be instead of of?
It should be up to four hundred dollars because if it only costs three hundred dollars, we don't want to have a policy that says we pay them four hundred dollars.
So that, that should read, if the student's school does not offer driver's education or if the student is homeschooled, reimbursement of up to four hundred upon receipt will be made to the parent guardian for the student to attend a public or private driver's education program. When they talk up there about they'd have to first access the driver's education program offered to, in their school? Okay, so there are some high schools that don't have driver's ed. Or there are some high schools that just don't have an open space for that student to take driver's ed. What it is, is driver's ed can be taught to Rutland Town students on any of our high schools. So if their school does not do it, they can contact Proctor West Rutland and get into that driver's education. And we would not pay it because there's, it's available. If they can't, then we would reimburse up to four hundred. What happened was state law does say that we reimburse or we pay for, but that we had no policy on it. And we got hit with, what was it, eight or nine hundred dollars?
It was a lot, yeah.
It was a lot of money. We did not pay it. We don't have a policy on it, we did, we don't have the program. It was someone going to a school outside of our area. In fact, was it the one up near Canada?
Yeah.
So, you know, no, you just can't, you know, they, she had already paid. I think the course was already done. So we couldn't say, no, you have to set up and try to get it through our other high schools. So we did not pay that. So we have to have a policy. And I apologize because I couldn't remember the change. And we had gone through our minutes and it wasn't in there. Are there anything else in this policy that any of you could see that they have a problem with or should change? Okay, so we'll go ahead and approve it with the change. And we won't vote on it until it's actually in print. So next meeting, if this policy should come back to us and it'll be ready for approval. Okay? And that'll take care of that paperwork. I don't think we need an executive session. Oh. We can.
Okay.
If we could, last...
I don't know if that's appropriate, so...
We can, I mean, is, has Chris looked at it?
Yes, Chris and Lisa have looked at it.
So they're okay with this? Okay. If we can go into executive session, it'll be on personnel.
Make a motion?
Make a motion, you go into executive session?
On personnel, okay. And then we need to turn off the recording.
Yep. Okay, we will be going into executive session. Lisa, you're invited to stay, okay? And do we need a motion afterwards? I don't think we do.
I think we have to come out to adjourn.
Right, right, but that would be the only thing. I just want to make sure, I don't think we need...
No, because we could always do something in August or whenever.
Right, right, okay. So anybody that is on the phone wants to come back, we shouldn't be more than a half an hour. There will be no action taken after this executive session. This is basically for information only for the board members. Okay, we'll go ahead and go into executive session at 7:50?